All right, I'm going to call to order our regularly scheduled Planning Commissioner meeting for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Shall we have a flag, please? Do you have a flag there?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Melanie Finling?
Here.
Chair Alan Partey? Chair Von Boyinger?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, sorry, so many chairs. Commissioner Von Boyinger?
Here.
Commissioner Tusan Soyan?
Here.
Commissioner David McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Belinda Higura?
Here.
Commissioner Paul Beck?
Present.
Okay.
Commission on matters not on tonight's agenda. Has everyone, anyone who's interested in speaking has three minutes? Has anyone made a request or is there anyone in the audience there who would like to speak?
Can you turn her speaker down?
Can you turn that monitor down just a hair, please? It's really loud.
I have a hand up for Betty.
Who would like to speak to something that's not on our current agenda? Can you please let her in and you'd run the timer? Teresa?
Do I do the letting in or do you guys do that? So, I'll go ahead and ask to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, first of all, I'd like to make a comment. There's some horrible feedback again. We had a problem with, we had audio. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, there's horrible feedback. There's double talk. Every time I say something, it gets said twice and the same thing was happening when Teresa was speaking.
So, we can hear pretty good on this end. Do you happen to have more than one computer on in your house in the same room?
So, I will try to make a comment. I don't know how well it's going to go over, but the audio monitor needs to do something about this. Hold on just a minute, please. I'll be right, one second.
We're suggesting that we could call for a five-minute recess so we can figure out what's going on on your end. Is that going to work for you?
Fine. Yes.
Maybe she could.
[inaudible] I should be unmuted. How's the sound this time?
It's great.
I love great. Okay, then where were we? I think we were on, go ahead.
Yep, I think we're on public comment.
Lovely. So, if we could go back and, was it Betty who was trying to speak with us?
It was Betty. Betty is re-logging in and we do have Johanna with her hand up.
Okay, and Johanna wants to speak to us about something that is not on the current agenda. That's correct?
Johanna, do you have something that is not on the agenda? I'm going to go ahead and, yeah, go ahead and unmute. Johanna, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure you said you can hear me. Yes, okay, thank you. Sorry, there's a lot of confusion there. Anyway, yes, I had a comment. Yeah, I had a comment. I just want to make sure you could hear me first with all that back and forth. So, I received a letter. Oh, gosh, I'm getting, I'm getting kicked back now, too.
I can hear you now.
Oh, no, now I'm getting that double speak thing. Oh, gosh, now it's happening to me again. Well, I'm going to try to go ahead and say this really quick. And I got a letter in the mail from the city of Mount Shasta signed by Jeffrey Collings. Oh, and actually, this may be more for the city council, but I'll just bring it up. Oh, this is annoying. I was going to say that I'll bring it up because it has to do with the water rating pieces for the 2018. And I just want to make sure that when we're doing letters to the public on water issues and other surveys and things like general plans, that we make sure we include all the tenants and apartment buildings because this just went to the owner of the property, which is me, and none of my tenants received this. So, I got, you know, four copies of the same letter. And so, I just want to make sure that whenever we're doing mailing lists, that we include all the residents because I think that's really important for whatever feedback the Planning Commission or the city council is trying to get. And that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. Can you still hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you. And then we've got Betty with her hand up again.
Okay, great.
Betty, you want to go ahead and unmute?
Okay, we're good now. Except Melinda just sounded like she was in a cabin. I can't think of the name of it. Sorry. Okay, first of all, I would like to agree with Johanna. We had a similar issue when we were dealing with the Golden Ex Charter School, when notices were sent out on that. One notice was sent to just Escaton where I live, but we have 100 residents here, so each resident should get it. But the reason that I wanted to speak tonight is just one thing. If the city planner would, when you put out an agenda, when you put pictures and graphs or any kind of, sorry, I lost the name. I'm a little tired, excuse me. Would you please put it so that we can read it right side up because it's impossible to read when those things are on the side? And I don't have a, and most people don't have, the advanced PDF file so that we can use the tools to change it. So, if you could just do that, please, it would make it much easier for us looking at the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anyone else with their hand up.
Eighty minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting. Commissioners, any comments, provisions?
Revisions, no.
Okay. I do have one.
I move to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Can you hold on a minute because actually I do have.
You have a correction, okay.
I have a correction because under item two, it says no one was absent and I was absent. And on item number five, approval was unanimous except that Nion recused himself and I was absent. I would add that there. Otherwise, I'm ready to take a motion.
I wasn't even a commissioner. I'm not even on it.
Oh, there you go, another correction.
So, there's another absent.
Were you there?
No.
You weren't?
I was absent.
Oh, David, you were, you had a break, guys.
David was absent, okay.
Okay, well then, please, add that to the corrections. Okay, so, but you weren't a commissioner, so maybe we don't need to put that on there? If you technically weren't a commissioner, then technically perhaps we don't need to put that on there.
No, I was.
Oh, okay. Well, in that case, I'm ready for a motion.
I was just absent.
Okay.
Could you repeat what the corrections were? It's kind of all over the map here from, because the hearing is weird, whether it's Teresa or somebody could.
Hear me?
Yeah.
My understanding is that the corrections that need to be added are that in roll call for the draft minutes, Melanie Finling and David were both absent. So, they need to be added to absent there. And then, I believe in terms of who voted on the items, that that doesn't, I think that the clarification was that it doesn't necessarily need to include the absent people. Was that what you were saying, Chair Finling?
No, I've seen it both ways. I don't know what the standard is. I know that in the past, sometimes we have noted that the sentence would also note that Commissioners Finling and McDowell were absent.
Okay.
Okay. I move to approve the minutes with the corrections of the commissioners that were absent.
All in favor?
Got a second.
Oh, second, I'm out of practice. Okay, do you have a second?
I second.
Raise your hand.
Oh, there we go. That looks like Tusan under that. Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. And actually, I'll abstain since I wasn't there.
Same with me.
And as will David. Okay, our next item is item number five. The case number 2022.09, I'm sorry, reading from the wrong one. Item number five, 2022.11 Summit Lofts Building Renovation Architectural Review. Teresa?
Hi, yes, I'm Teresa Spade and I'm the city planner. And I'm here to introduce the application for the Summit Lofts Architectural Design Review. And I recommend for this application, a motion to conditionally approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Mount Shasta for the architectural design application and adoption of the California Environmental Quality Act Class 1 exemption for application number 2022.11 Summit Lofts Building Renovation Project. And this is an architectural review application for exterior renovations to the existing historical structure that is on the corner of Mount Shasta Boulevard and Lake Street in the center of Mount Shasta. The, there are some substantial renovations to the structure. And if we could pull up some of the design from the project. So, this shows the site plan and shows what is being proposed on the site plan. And as you can see, we've got some illustrations that show what the exterior renovations are going to look like. If you could go back to that last one, please. So, one of the features that is going to be a significant change is that there will be a patio area outside between the subject structure and the residential development that is directly adjacent. And you can go ahead and go to the next slide. There are some substantial renovations to the exterior of the structure, which include the new addition of a peaked entryway. There are new windows, new parapet cap flashing, new lane scotting with trim, new wood cedar posts and beams. There's new facade materials, including but not limited to the light gauge metal panels and cedarwood panels. There is elimination of windows, updating the existing awning materials, and new paint colors. New exterior mounted lighting is proposed and new signs, both hanging and flash mounted signs will be incorporated into the design. Other exterior changes include new planter boxes attached to the structure on the East Lake side and the creation of a gated landscaped patio area with a structure-mounted outdoor fireplace and fireplace chimney enclosure on the interior side of the building. There are some applications that have been processed recently that are associated with this subject application. One was a recent lot line adjustment, which essentially creates the patio area. Prior to the lot line adjustment, there was no additional space for that. Additionally, a building permit is, has been issued and is active for interior renovations of the building. Let's see here. The project staff report goes into a detailed description that was provided by the applicant regarding the project. My understanding is that we will be hearing from the architect and so I will let him describe the project in detail in his words. I will say that the surrounding land uses, it is located in the C1, which is a downtown commercial zone. Northeast is the alleyway and Mount Shasta Community Resource Office. Northwest is East Lake Street and the Fifth Season Retail Store. Southeast is a residence and southwest is North Mount Shasta Boulevard and the CVS Pharmacy. The project is consistent with the general plan. There are land use policies in the general plan that include encouraging an attractive downtown business center. And I believe that this is consistent with that policy. Regarding scenic resources in the general plan, there's a policy to conserve and enhance the public street trees and trees on public property with effective properties to allow for trimming or removing trees that present a substantial safety hazard and encourage voluntary conservation and enhancement of tree resources on private property. The project is not located in the mapped scenic resource area and is not expected to result in significant impacts to scenic resources. There is no tree removal proposed. Some trimming is proposed where the existing tree is overhanging the structure's roof. The existing structure is 27 feet in height and will largely maintain the same massing in height with the exception of the entryway A-frame addition, which will rise above the roofline by 1.5 feet. Regarding cultural resources, the project was referred to the Northeast Information Center and there's additionally information that is in the general plan protecting historic resources and other natural resources. Some measures have been added as, they're essentially standard measures for protection of architectural and cultural resources that are generally included with most projects of this type. And there, what is considered like discovery conditions that essentially say if there's anything found, the project needs to stop and the appropriate person needs to be consulted regarding the discovery. Regarding air quality, there is a wood burning appliance that is being proposed and it will need to be EPA certified. That should be addressed as part of the building permit process. In terms of zoning code consistency, there is some discussion regarding canopies and eaves being allowed to extend three feet into the sidewalk area along the frontage. That's allowable per section 18.20060 of the zoning code. Signs are included in the overall architectural review and for this reason, the signs are being considered as part of the application tonight. Overall, the signs are in compliance with sign code. However, there are some issues with the signs that need to be addressed. Specifically, the hanging signs do not appear to meet the clearance requirements. And so, there needs to be some revisions to either eliminate those signs or elevate them so that they meet the clearance requirements. And there's also a requirement that wall or roof graphics be limited to one signable area for each facade. And so, there needs to be a little bit of a revision to address that requirement. And for this reason, there is a recommended condition that proposed signage for the project be approved through the graphics application process and not included in the approval for tonight. Let's see. I feel like there was some other, we've got the facts supporting the findings, which I'll go over in a moment, but I wanted to just go through the conditions and make sure that we got them all. So, I feel like I missed something there. So, there were some other conditions, but they're kind of discussed in the findings. One of the project conditions has to do with, if we go back to the site plan, which was the first one there, you'll see that there is a proposed service area located in the alleyway. And I don't, I never got clarification on what that service area was intended for. But I wanted to make sure that it would not be used as a vehicle access loading zone or parking area because it doesn't meet requirements in terms of snow clearance and we have not had the opportunity to review it in terms of whether or not. Some trimming is proposed where the existing tree is overhanging the structure's roof. The existing structure is 27 feet in height and will largely maintain the same massing in height with the exception of the entryway A-frame addition, which will rise above the roofline by 1.5 feet. Regarding cultural resources, the project was referred to the Northeast Information Center, and there's additionally information that is in the general plan protecting historic resources and other natural resources. Some measures have been added as, they're essentially standard measures for protection of architectural and cultural resources that are generally included with most projects of this type. And they're what is considered like discovery conditions that essentially say if there's anything found, the project needs to stop, and the appropriate person needs to be consulted regarding the discovery. Regarding air quality, there is a wood burning appliance that is being proposed, and it will need to be EPA certified. That should be addressed as part of the building permit process. In terms of zoning code consistency, there is some discussion regarding canopies and eaves being allowed to extend three feet into the sidewalk area along the frontage. That's allowable per Section 18.20060 of the zoning code. Signs are included in the overall architectural review, and for this reason, the signs are being considered as part of the application tonight. Overall, the signs are in compliance with sign code. However, there are some issues with the signs that need to be addressed. Specifically, the hanging signs do not appear to meet the clearance requirements, and so there needs to be some revisions to either eliminate those signs or elevate them so that they meet the clearance requirements. And there's also a requirement that wall or roof graphics be limited to one signable area for each facade, and so there needs to be a little bit of a revision to address that requirement. And for this reason, there is a recommended condition that proposed signage for the project be approved through the graphics application process and not included in the approval for tonight. Let's see. I feel like there was some other, we've got the facts supporting the findings, which I'll go over in a moment, but I wanted to just go through the conditions and make sure that we got them all. So I feel like I missed something there. So there were some other conditions, but they're kind of discussed in the findings. One of the project conditions has to do with, if we go back to the site plan, which was the first one there, you'll see that there is a proposed service area located in the alleyway, and I don't, I never got clarification on what that service area was intended for, but I wanted to make sure that it would not be used as a vehicle access loading zone or parking area because it doesn't meet requirements in terms of snow clearance, and we have not had the opportunity to review it in terms of whether or not it meets a parking requirement. There was a concern about the string lighting in the patio area. As it's shown on the illustrations, it appears that it might shine into the neighbor's yard, which might be an issue for the neighbor. So I had added a condition that the string lighting not be located where it can be seen from the residential property to the southeast. And then we had talked about having the ADA parking space be on the street to serve the lower ADA unit when we had met in a meeting, and I have added a condition requiring that the applicant obtain permission from the city council for approval of the ADA parking space to be delineated and maintained by Public Works. So going through the findings, which are required to support approval of the project, I have a short discussion of the findings and how I believe that they can be met. And, let's see if I can find my first one. Okay. So the first finding is that the proposed building and site plan are consistent with the photographic examples shown in the guidelines of acceptable styles, elements, themes, materials, massing, detailing, landscaping, and relationships to street frontages and abutting properties. The proposed improvements include addition of elements and materials that conform to the photographic examples and descriptions. Additional landscaping along East Lake in the form of planters and landscaping in the patio area soften and break up the areas of the building that lack architectural features. I do discuss a little bit about that parking space in the alley here and then add the recommended condition that the proposed service area not be used as a vehicle access loading zone. Again, we talked about this already, but we talked about the ADA access parking and how a condition has been added there to require that they obtain the permission from city council for that ADA space. And with those added conditions, the finding can be made that the proposed building and site plan are consistent. The second finding, finding B, is the design of the proposed building or structure includes universally acceptable wall materials, alternative treatments for panelized or prefabricated structures identified in the guidelines under color and materials. The proposed improvements use natural wood and light gauge metal siding to add interest and break up the facade. The use of wood or wood-like materials is strongly encouraged by the design guidelines. Building colors tend towards neutral and base colors for the bulk of the structure with contrasting accents. And with the exception of the proposed lighting, this finding can be made. So there is a condition added regarding the string lighting and having it be located in an area where it's not intrusive to the neighborhood, the neighbor. The next finding is finding C, that the roof design includes appropriate detail to match the surrounding structures, does not create glare, and is contemporary in color to the building. So the roof itself is flat and not visible to the public. The new parapet cap flashing has been added that complements a new color for the masonry facade, and this finding can be made. The design of the structure is sufficient to prevent vibrations or noise from sources internal to the structure from being detected at the property lines. The continuing use proposed in the structure is not expected to result in structural vibration or noise issues. This finding can be made. The proposed color scheme is consistent with the preferences identified in the guidelines under color and materials. The base color is a neutral color and the trim color or accents or contrasts the base color. And the proposed color scheme is consistent with the colors and materials. The base color is a neutral off-white with a dark gray accent color for metal siding and natural cedar for the A-frame entry facade. The accent colors contrast with the base colors, including dark gray trim around the windows and at the roofline, and this finding can be made. F is the site plan demonstrates both motorized and non-motorized connectivity from the public right-of-way to the buildings and other site amenities. The building is a historic structure with no setback to the sidewalk located in the walkable downtown area. Improvements allow for adequate room on the sidewalk for pedestrian use. Additionally, the building is incorporating ADA access for an ADA accessible room on the ground floor. This finding can be made. The proposed development is in conformity with the standards of the city's Land Development Code and other applicable ordinances insofar as the location and appearance of the building and structures are involved. And that is finding G. And as conditioned, the proposed development is in conformity with the standards of the city's Land Development Code and other applicable ordinances. A condition is added for revisions to the proposed signs, including removal of the sign in the alleyway and removing or increasing the height of projecting signs that do not meet the minimum 10-foot clearance, and this finding can be made. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 202202 for the project, subject to the findings and conditions of the staff report. And the Resolution 202202 is included as Attachment 1 to the staff report. And I am available for any questions or comments, if you have any.
Yes, let's have, we have an opportunity for commissioners' comments and questions. I couldn't tell, and I don't recall. Is Alan there this evening?
No.
No, okay. So I'll just go, let's start with Tucson. Did you have any comments or questions?
Does the, do the string lights proposed, do they fall within our lighting ordinance?
So I believe that they, there is some language in there that talks about lighting being downcast and not shining beyond the boundaries of the parcel. So I do believe it does fall under the design review.
Yeah, I guess it depends on the brightness of the lights because they're exposed. They don't have a...
And a lighting type was given as part of the application, but the actual light bulb and brightness of the light bulb to be used was not provided.
Okay. I'd like to see a little bit more detail on that and their, even specified the lumens of the lights or something.
I can...
As far as...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on. We're not going to have, we'll hold off. We're going to do commission comments and questions for now, and then we'll have the project proponent come up, and then you can answer some of our questions. So hold that thought, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, Tucson.
And then you mentioned about the three-foot appendage from the building, and that's coming out into the sidewalk. Is there a certain height at which those appendages can come out, or what is the rule on that?
So the code mentions eaves and canopies being allowed to come out within three feet. It does not mention a specific height for those eaves or canopies. In terms of the architectural design, and I didn't mention, but I think we're all aware that there was a public comment letter, and that might be what you're alluding to, was a public comment letter did mention the potential that the sides of the A-frame might be troublesome in terms of pedestrians running into it. I think that that might be a question for the architect. I'm assuming that the architect has put some thought into this, so that, I think that would be a good question for the architect in terms of how that design has been incorporated such that that would not be an issue.
I think per ADA, it can't stick...
Let's hang on a second.
ADA is, nothing can protrude more than three inches off the building between 27 and 81 inches, but since this is starting low, it should meet ADA because it's already going to be protruding before it gets to that path of travel area.
It does seem...
That'd be my understanding of it.
It does seem like the safety hazard. That was the first thing when I looked at it. That was the main thing that popped out to me as being a potential hazard unless there's, there was something underneath it to prevent someone from walking too close to, for head clearance. That was the main thing that I saw. But if it was a, if the appendage was low and it was, say, a planter of some sort that was coming off the side of the building into the sidewalk, is that, that would not be considered an appendage? Is that how I'm reading it? If appendages are talking about eaves and canopies, does the, does the, like, the planter become an appendage, or is it not part of the building?
So the planter, I believe, is not part of the building, that it's just in front of the building. So that's a question. However, the planter is not, yeah, so that's a, that's a different thing.
Okay.
And planters are encouraged within that area per the design review.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tucson. Paul?
Yes, so mainly Tucson addressed what I was concerned about, which was the A-frame. Initially, looking at the drawings, it was really hard to tell, but it looks at about six feet, like they cut straight down at an angle into the building. I was concerned also with pedestrians walking into it, but more importantly, usable sidewalk area that if it was to come straight down into the sidewalk and not cut in, how much would that take up? I think you probably need about six feet of unmolested sidewalk to allow people passing each other, and if not a planter, maybe a bench might be something that could be put there or something. But that's, you know, was my main concern about what I saw about that was also being a safety hazard, taller people hitting their heads on that, but also enough room for two people to walk by each other comfortably, going in opposite directions. And that's, by all, I wanted to address on that.
Thank you, Paul. David?
No. The only thing I see is the courtyard doesn't have ADA accessibility. It looks like it stares into the courtyard and not a ramp, but I don't know if that's our concern, or will that be picked up in permitting? I don't know.
Building Department would...
I think in the back, though, you could give them there.
You have to have it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, David?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Belinda?
What is the awnings made out of? Are they metal or the fabric?
That's a question for the applicant.
Okay. And do we know how, I don't understand how an awning cannot be the 10 feet, but the building A-frame has to be, and the sign has to be 10 feet? Because those awnings aren't 10 feet. None of the awnings in town are. You know, it's not just this project. So I kind of get a little confused about that nine-foot tall person running into everything. So I don't know. I don't think, I think the A-frame with its weird angled thing is an accident waiting to happen, and that putting a bench or a planter, those are, things are not permanent, so it doesn't really address that issue. Benches can be moved or stolen or whatever, changed, your mind gets changed. And once again, the sidewalk width that Paul mentioned with a planter, I assume is ADA compliant, six feet or whatever it is. And the handicap, courtyard handicap thing has, is also, I had that on my list. And I think that string lights, I know the string lights and I've seen them, they are not full cutoff, and so they're going to expose light, and I have a noise issue with that courtyard because it's concrete, and the sound will just go up the wall and bounce off into the neighbors. So others, I have some issues with having a big party in there. You know, is there a time that that's closed? Does it close at eight? You know, and is there a door from the building into the courtyard, or do you come out onto the sidewalk and go in? Do you know, Teresa?
There is none shown on the plan.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Belinda. Vaughn?
I have some of the same, similar concerns. Have we received comments from the residential neighbors at all?
We haven't. The only public comment we received was the one that I posted and sent you.
Okay. And so my question are with regard to lights on the actual building, would they be above the fence line of, say, the courtyard, for example, so it would shine into that residential or on the back of the building that would shine onto the residences there?
If we could see the elevation that shows the proposed lights that are on the exterior of the building, what you will see is that the light styles there are fully downcast and shielded. So yes, you can see that I'm on that elevation. So do you see how they have shielding and they shine fully down with those that are attached to the building there?
Back to the question of the service area. I guess one of the questions I have is how are they going to receive inventory and equipment and whatever else that the deliveries may be made there? Where will those be made at?
Well, this is a historic building, and so the presumption is that there is not a requirement for a loading zone because it's unreasonable to expect a historic building to accommodate that. Normally, in this type of a situation, if there are supplies that are needed for the stores, they're going to have to park and bring those supplies in like everybody else. I don't see like a major, like, restaurant or anything proposed in the, in the structure at this time. As far as I can tell, it's still some small retail spaces and then some visitor-serving spaces that are above. So I am not foreseeing that it's going to be a significant change in terms of the need for loading.
I could just see some sort of Pepsi truck or something that's going to park in the middle of, you know, Mount Shasta Boulevard or something to make their deliveries, and that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay. And I do happen to know that the string lighting, they do have where you can adjust high and low volume of light. Is that something that's on the...
That is not what I've seen as proposed.
Okay. And so noise abatement, and I know that fellow commissioner asked the same question with regards to business hours and noise. What's the, what's the finding there?
There's an assumption that... There's an assumption that all businesses need to meet noise requirements in terms of not being a nuisance to their neighbors. If you believe that approval of the patio next to the residential building could have the potential to create a nuisance issue, we can add a condition that might provide for some limitations on either the time of use, the types of use that are in there, you know, so that they're not having live fans in there or something like that. Yeah, so that's something that can be added.
Okay, and I was thinking about special use permits or something that somebody might apply for because of special events or some sort of, you know, events where corporate events or something of that nature. Are we going to allow those?
So if there is a necessity for a permit for a special event, then they would need to go through the same procedures as anyone else that was having a special event.
Okay, and I have one last one. With regards to, you know, we were just talking about our bike bicycle plan for the for the for the city. Is there any has there been any kind of allowance for maybe a fixed bicycle rack there in front of that building we were talking about? Seating or planters or whatever?
So normally, when we look at a new development, we do look at parking and we look at bike parking with that. Since there's no proposed change of use that would intensify the use of the structure, we're not looking at parking of any type. So the number of rooms that are proposed for visitor-serving have remained the same. If you look at the site plan, I'm not sure if it shows it, but I reviewed the building permit application, and the building permit application shows that in the upper story of the structure, about half, like the front half of the upper story of the structure was used as an apartment in the past. And then the back half of the structure was used for several very small visitor-serving rooms that each had a sink in them. And then there was, I think, about four convenience restrooms located in such a manner as each of these small rooms could access the convenience bathroom should they need to. The new plan shows the same number of visitor-serving units, they're just larger, and the apartment has been eliminated. And since it does not it doesn't intensify the use, the building isn't bigger, there isn't more rooms being added, then as a planner, I don't look at the need for additional parking. I would say that if we were going to accommodate bicycle parking or want to do that, my preference would be for that to be occurring in the patio area or on the side between the structures rather than the sidewalks, just because, you know, the fewer things that we have obstructing the sidewalks, the better.
Okay.
Thank you, Vaughn. Anything else? Okay. I think those are all very helpful comments and questions. I'm only going to add one thing, and that is that on the elevation keynotes page, it reads that those outdoor sconces are actually up-down sconces. And when you look at the nighttime views of those elevations, it does show that light is projecting up. And that, along with those exterior exposed bulbs, would not be allowed. That kind of lighting isn't allowed. So I would ask that they submit a new design for their exterior lighting that doesn't have upward-facing lights because it is a goal of our community to protect our nighttime sky. And again, I think it sounds like, Teresa, you've taken care of the lighting on the patio. That I would also add, again, it would have to be full cutoff downward-facing, so that lighting style wouldn't work. They would have to have some kind of completely enclosed bulb in order to work out there.
Yeah, I was thinking something below the fence line.
I think that's true, but it would also project it could project forward out onto the street, which would not technically work.
I just wanted to mention that I note I noted, and I don't know whether they got formal approval for it at any point, but that Yaxx does have string lighting in their outdoor patio area, and that's within the same district. And, you know, I don't believe that they are directly adjacent to any residences, might be the one big main difference there.
Yeah, that's why I was asking because I know the other places there aren't.
No, I think that is a good point, Teresa. And I don't know that anybody's ever asked us, Yaxx didn't ask us about the exterior lighting.
I mean, in general, it adds ambiance, but I'm the neighbors might not think so.
Another good point, I agree. They do add, I mean, I'd like to have them at my house, but I wouldn't want them projecting into my bedroom. So, okay, so like I say, so the main thing, then, it sounds like the lights are kind of dealt with, and then the those sconces, I want to make sure that those are different fixtures that are fully downward-facing and no upward lighting. And with that, if there's anything else, commissioners, I'm going to open up the public part of this and ask the project proponent. Come on first. Oh, Tucson, go ahead.
I just have a couple more. What is the distance from the face of the building on East Lake Street to the curb, the width of the sidewalk?
I believe the sidewalk is 10 feet, but I would need to take a look at the plans. Let me see if I can pull it up. So it should be shown on the site plan. I believe there's an actual.
I couldn't read the dimension on the site.
Okay, so it's just too small. Yeah, well, my memory is that it's a 10-foot-wide sidewalk.
Okay.
10-foot in front on Main Street, that's a that says 10 feet.
Right, but the side, I don't think it's.
You don't think the side is 10?
Old unemployment office, you know, should be 10 feet. I'm pretty sure it's the same.
I think it might say 11.
You think you said 11?
It looks like 11.
Oh.
I might magnify the glass a little.
That might be something the architect can answer, too.
And Teresa, was was the neighbor notified of this meeting or any time during this process?
The notification process requires that there is neighbor notification. And I would assume that the noticing was taken care of.
Okay.
If we need to follow up with that, we can do that, too, if this is something that's going to be continued.
And I think it's important to kind of remember that this is a residential building next, whether whoever owns it in the future or the or whatever, it should we should kind of try to take care of them.
Seeing that, then let's go ahead and let's start with the project proponents, please.
An incredible moment shared in Mount Shasta. A group of three Northern California friends embarked on fulfilling a dream by purchasing a two-story mixed-use building on the corner of Mount Shasta Boulevard and Lake Street in downtown Mount Shasta. My name is April LaFrance, and I'm one of the building owners for the Summit Lofts project being discussed. My husband and I have been real estate developers and community investors for over 20 years and have partnered with a good friend with professional experience in the hotel and hospitality industry. We're happy to be investing in this community, and I'd like to share a bit of our team's vision for the property. Although the number of hotel rooms will be reduced by nearly 50% from the original Solari Hotel, built by Luis Solari in 1923, this property will once again fulfill its original purpose to host visitors and commerce in the heart of downtown. With a backdrop of the 14,179-foot wonder, the building will maintain its original footprint and vintage Douglas wood floors, but it will be optimized for modern guests inside along with plans for an updated exterior that reflects excellent architectural design with a clean alpine theme. The ground floor will continue to be home for the Shasta Mountain Guides, whose owners have been going strong in leading 26 seasons of adventures on the mountain. And you'll see the picture behind you on the left is Hotel Solari, and this is the Boulevard side perspective. We've been working closely with the City of Mount Shasta and Siskiyou Economic Development Council to redesign the space in an optimal way, maintaining Mount Shasta's design guidelines while creating a fresh economic engine downtown. Once the boutique hotel reopens this year under its new name, the Summit Lofts, it will create a continuous infusion of TOT funding for the city's general fund budget. The city will be able to reinvest the TOT funding to provide for things like the maintenance of streets, snow plowing, streetlights, traffic signals, and public safety services such as police, fire, and medical aid. The downtown revitalization project has received vital support from significant community organizations and businesses, and we just wanted to take a moment to thank Siskiyou Economic Development, Discover Siskiyou, Ramshaw's Ace Hardware that we are at nearly every day, Diversified Electrical Service, Mount Shasta Chamber of Commerce, Pipeline Where We Get Lunch, Shasta Mountain Guides, and the fifth season for their incredible support. So thank you very much. I believe our architects, the principal architect and the main architect are available for public comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me queue up the next one.
All right, good evening. I'm David Harrington with Rod Studio. I did the exterior design for Summit Lofts, so happy to answer any of the questions that commission brought up tonight or give any insights kind of the design intent. I think Teresa kind of summarized it, which I appreciate, but of course, the real goal was we wanted to modernize and update the building and using materials that fit in the surrounding context, but at the same time, kind of tied to the to the past history of the building. I think by using wainscoting like we've done, kind of ties and pays homage to that that era of building. Wanted to stress, too, that a lot of the canopies that you're seeing in the renderings, actually, all of the ones over the storefront, aside from the A-frame, those are actually existing. So the frame that supports those are existing, so we're just proposing new material to replace that canvas. So as far as the dimension and the current height of those, we're kind of locked into that. So in, you know, kind of addressing the hanging signs from that, you know, we go in with the building code of having a head clearance of six foot eight, we wanted those signs to be seven feet or higher. And unfortunately, we can't really go higher with that if we support those from those existing canopies over the storefront windows. So we'd like to stick with that, meaning that we keep with the six-foot-eight building code requirement, or we just use the signs above the awning that we're showing in the renderings as well.
Did you did you take notes on the questions that commissioners had? Or can you go ahead? Can you are you the best person to?
Yeah, I can jump into those if you guys would like, of course. So I think the I think the biggest one, I think everybody's biggest one is is the potential safety hazard at the A-frame entry. So I agree, I think we all agree that there is this potential. Truthfully, when this started, the design, we had preference to actually not have the cutaway that we're showing in the renderings. The protrusion actually came all the way down to the sidewalk, but Public Works requested that we do away with that just to help with snow clearance, which I understand. However, if we were to go back to that, having it bare down on the sidewalk at the full three-feet width, that would help both structurally support the A-frame as well as prevent a hazard for such as a blind person that was pointed out. Alternatively, if we were to keep the the angle that's shown, which starts at seven feet, so above that six-foot-eight threshold, we could use the planters at the base of that. I think that would be our second option, sort of like what the front rendering shows there. I have that concrete planter there. It was talked about that perhaps the planter is movable, and I know that was one of the arguments, that if the planter were ever to move, then having that canopy there could be a safety hazard. So I would maybe propose that we make those planters just fixed, being cast in place, two feet, three feet off the wall there. And I believe the sidewalk width is 11 feet there, so if we were trying to hold on to six-feet width, we have five feet to play with, and we're only asking for three feet there. So we have net eight feet clear there. So I think, just to kind of summarize that, I think preference would be we have the three-foot-deep canopy come all the way down to the sidewalk, and that would give us eight feet clearance of sidewalk, or we keep the taper and have fixed concrete planters at each end so that someone can't walk into it, if that makes sense. And then I think the next biggest issue was the lighting. So the string lights, we can, you know, that was just something to kind of, someone mentioned ambiance, definitely just trying to create a sense of space with utilizing that lighting. I understand that a potential neighbor might have issue with that, of course. So we propose that we could either put the string lights on a timer so that they shut off at 9:00 PM at night. The string lights that we were kind of picturing, too, you guys mentioned, Yaxx of the road, those are kind of a standard Edison bulb string light, so low wattage, low lumen, or just create ambience. They're not really a service light for anything. They don't offer sufficient lumens to really provide much more than that, but we could drop them to be at or below the fence line so that it would never be an issue. And as far as the up-down light, that was a good catch. I appreciate you bringing that up. So you're absolutely right. Most important is for lights, we don't want uplight casting out into the night sky. We don't want light pollution. However, in the past, when we've had that be a requirement, we've been able to do the up-down lights at the height we're showing, given that it's a two-story building, because the light, the uplight is only going to broadcast so far. And as long as it is only shining up the wall a few feet, five, six feet, it's really just kind of creating, it's actually more of a safety issue in our minds at that point. It's lighting at the sidewalk that much more, and it is giving that ambience, having that up-down light. So I could see if we wanted to place an up-down light at the near the parapet cap, then yes, we would have an issue, but my stance on that would be that it's low enough, we're not actually broadcasting into the night sky. The next items were ADA access to the patio. So currently, the adjacent patio space, that's actually right now, I believe it's 30 inches above grade at the sidewalk, so and slopes back to the alley. So what we were thinking is that the alleyway where the ADA room is, they would go down the alley and then down the back way to get to the patio, and it would be more or less less than 120 slope there for them. So that would be a way we were going to show during planning to address that ADA access to the patio. Any comments from anyone else on that?
Commissioners, while we have him here, is this answering your questions?
I didn't hear what she said.
I didn't hear what she said.
I'm not hearing anything. Okay, go ahead.
When is the proposed project to be completed? When do you anticipate being in business?
Was that for David? I don't hear anything. David Harrington, are you responding to that?
No.
So, that one, I think that's up to the building owners. Is April there?
Okay, so then let's skip, let's hold on, Paul. Let's save, let's have the questions right now. If Commissioners have questions about the architectural piece right now, let's do that. But we have Mr. Harrington here to ask questions. So, Commissioners, does anyone want to ask an additional question to David Harrington?
I like the idea of putting a planter under those steep pitched roof on the front entry. I think that will keep people from walking too close to it to hit their head, as long as that's kept in mind. I think that resolves the issue. But I was also wondering what type of material is being proposed for these, the charcoal panels on the new facade?
So, it's a company, PacClad, makes these box-rib panels. So, it's sort of like a traditional corrugated metal, except it's a little bit more boxed in profile, so it's 90 degrees, and it's a little bit more modern. It's a little bit more rigid than a typical corrugated, but it comes pre-painted, and it's actually what the renderings are showing. I give a pretty good depiction of what that material actually looks like. So, it would be a wood-framed, I think someone asked how it was constructed. It'd be a wood-framed structure, but platted in this metal on all three exposed sides.
So, the panels, I'm not talking about the roof awning. I'm talking about the panels on the wall. Is that, are you saying that's metal?
On the A-frame, three-foot extrusion, is that what you're asking about?
No, no.
Rain scotting?
No, the wind scotting.
Okay, sorry. That's just painted wood.
Okay.
I got a question. What's the patio for? What's the intended use?
That's really just a place to have a desirable space for people staying the night in the hotel. It is for guests only. I know their concern was how many people might be out there, but given the number of rooms at this space, I don't see a large group out there ever, because it is a key to access gate reserved only for guests. But it's really just a place to, you know, grab your coffee in the morning from a nearby business and just kind of enjoy it out there on the patio with the view to Mount Shasta to the north there. So, really just kind of a hangout spot, enjoy downtown as a guest at the hotel.
So, that's why there's no door or anything from the building into that?
Partly with the grades that we're dealing with, and then considering that all the hotels are on the second floor, other than the ADA room in the back that is correct, wanted to keep that separate from the building.
And being new to the Commission, I missed, how many hotel rooms are intended now?
I believe it's 13. 13 beds, I think 11 rooms.
It's 11.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Harrington?
Is there going to be a time cutoff for that courtyard? It won't be going till midnight? I understand the need, I mean, it's nice if friends are staying in a hotel to have somewhere to sit together, because hotel rooms don't lend themselves to that. So, I understand why you want to do that.
And I just-
I was getting a yes from April in the audience, by the way. Nobody else could see that, so that's what was happening.
I think one other comment, too, is the fireplace. Someone mentioned wood. We actually, we're intending that to be gas or propane fed.
Anything else, Commissioners? I know we can have, anything else for us?
Tucson.
Oh, wait, Tucson, go ahead.
I have one final comment for now. I think it would be nice, a nice feature to add more plant, either planter boxes, window boxes, or whether they be fixed or movable, I think it would add a lot to the facade along the Eastlake Street especially. That's just a comment and something I think would be a nice addition.
Okay. I like that.
And I have a question regarding whether to have fixed planter boxes or to extend the A-frame down to the sidewalk. How, and I'm not asking to speak for Public Works, but their thinking was that those would make it harder for snow removal, but potentially would the planter boxes also not make snow removal more difficult? Or do you know?
I could see that being a planter box, it might be easy to plow around that versus, considering it's a hardscape material versus being the metal, fear for damaging that, which is kind of my first thought on that, but I think they'd be able to happily answer that a little bit better. But, yeah, I mean, that's definitely a valid point, but I think with it being a hardscape material and planter, you'd be able to plow around that a little bit easier and not navigate around the narrow fin wall that comes down, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, anything else, Commissioners? I don't hear anything. All right. Thank you. Who else would like to speak with us regarding the project?
Are you opening up to public, Melanie?
I am. I see that there's another person, Ryan Russell, who's been on the video. I don't know if he's part of the project.
Yeah, I'm the principal architect at Rad Studio, so I'm on the same team with David, so just listening in.
Okay.
I've got Peggy Rush with a hand up.
Okay, let's go ahead and take some public comment.
Okay, go ahead and unmute Peggy.
My name is Peggy Rush. I'm a resident of Mount Shasta. So, I think, first of all, I'd like to say there's some really good questions and some discussions going on around some of the potential problems with the project and how to solve them. So, my comment is basically a recommendation that the Planning Commission, in order to make really clear findings on this project, that it be continued and come back to you with all these different issues that have been raised, really clarified and written out. For example, what is happening with the A-frame, whether, what's happening with the string lights? Will they be lowered? Will they be on a timer? Will there be a permanent planter or not? Because right now, as what I've heard in the findings, is that the findings would be as the design is illustrated now. And right now, there's been discussion of a lot of different changes. So, that's basically my recommendation and my comment, and thank you for, yeah, your great detail given to the project.
Thank you, Peggy. All right. Who else would like to speak with us this evening?
5906 Castle Avenue, Dunsmere. I'd like just to take a moment and remember my dear friend Mama Spalzini, who once ran that business there, ran both the liquor store and the apartments there. I don't know if anybody here had an opportunity to ever go into her apartment there overlooking Mount Shasta. It was absolutely a beautiful apartment that I will never forget. I have stayed there in some of the rooms in the past. I have other friends that have stayed there in the past, but I'd like to just honor and remember Mama Spalzini at this time. I think she would probably be approved of this project if she were here, but she was a fine citizen of this town. The other thing I had noticed here is that the public, the access in the alley seems to be somewhat undefined in this project. I don't see how it can be a lot of loaning zone or not a parking area and still can be a handicap access. Those two things oppose me and would need to be corrected, I would think.
Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to speak with us this evening?
Looks like we've got Vicki Gold.
Hello? Good evening.
Oh, sorry, I just muted you. Go ahead, Vicki.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's very inspiring to see people coming in to assist with beautification of the downtown area. I think we're all in favor of that, and enhanced use, you know, the TOT enhancement as well, I think it's all excellent. I also want to say that a friend of mine who visited the Spalzinis loved that apartment upstairs and thought it was absolutely beautiful and couldn't believe that it was so magnificent right downtown. I think it is extremely important, I'd like to ask, I know there's no cross-talk or questioning, but I would like to know, if one of you would please ask, how many historic buildings are identified in the central downtown area? The reason I ask, of course, is because we're looking at grandfathering, and that involves precedent-setting, and issues such as parking and deliveries could make a big difference, you know, if this, if there are many, many buildings that could potentially have future investors come in and enhance them. So, that's one point. As far as the noise from, it's potentially there from that beautiful gathering area outside, I do know all of you have probably been to Bourbon Street in New Orleans at night and seen how people really use those spaces, and can you imagine if all of the buildings in town were enhanced in that way? The neighborhood could really be changed, and there are residences. I appreciate your very serious concern about the residences. With regard to the noticing with neighbors, there was a statement that it was assumed that they were notified. I understand that, but I would ask that you postpone any decision until you can confirm that all of the neighbors were notified. I know if I lived there, I would certainly want to be notified, and I might be completely in accord with it and think it was a great idea. I also agree with Peggy that it should be continued, and we should have these issues clarified and written out, and I love the idea. I mean, it's a quite beautiful plan, and I want to acknowledge that, you know, from my perspective, this is downtown, front, and central, and so it is quite an important piece of property, and I think we look forward to a change, but there is definitely a change that might be worthy of a negative declaration. I just feel there are so many issues and so many contingencies and changes, and just to go through a perfunctory process of approving it at the planning level and stages seems, it poses questions for me.
Okay. Vicki, you have four seconds. All right. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Would somebody else like to speak with us this evening?
Hey. All right. My name's Josh LaFrance. I'm the general contractor and one of the building owners, so I appreciate you guys taking the time tonight to review our project. I just wanted to quickly speak to that service area. It's, it is unclear, and I think we can make some clarifications to kind of help, you know, get everybody on the same page with that. Essentially, what that service area is, is a place for our trash bins to go. There was a comment about bike parking, that somewhere we could easily lock bikes up off the alley, off the sidewalks, you know, that it's just an area for getting the trash enclosure off of the alley and off at the back of the building. So, I know that was one question. And then thinking through any others, well, for one, the Splinzinis, I would have loved to have met them. They sound like a pretty, pretty cool couple, and I know she outlived her husband. And so, yeah, we're just, we're privileged to be part of that history. We're doing our best to preserve a bunch of that in the hotel. The original room doors, super cool Douglas fir doors, we're unable to use those because of fire code for our main entrances, so we salvaged those and we're repurposing them into the bathroom doors. So, kind of fun to kind of preserve little pieces where we could within the, within the project. So, we're excited, and we just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another person I'd like to speak?
We don't have anyone online.
Okay. And no one else in the audience?
There's no one in the audience. There are people in the audience. There's no one that's speaking.
Okay. Well, then, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period of this and go back to Commissioners. Additional comments, questions, clarifications? This time, let's start with Vaughn. Nothing from Vaughn. How about Belinda?
I'm still a little unclear on the, and it's partially because I couldn't quite hear the architect, what the lighting for the side of the building, not the string lights, what does, what do they look like? So, I really think we need to come back with a little more detail. I don't know what everybody else thinks. I mean, it needs to be clear, because to me, I'm not, it's not clear. And I would also like the solid commitment of the string lights being below the fence line, I think. I don't know, you guys, that's my opinion. Sounds like we've addressed the, what, the A-frame with the planters at the basis of the cut? Because I'm hoping somebody confirms what I think I heard.
Yes.
Yeah.
Something there.
Yeah. So, that's about all. It's, yeah, and the fact that a commitment to when the lights go out, you know, when the lights go out and the party ends in the courtyard, that's important to-
It has to be 10 o'clock at the latest.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can condition, we can condition the project, some of these things, if we come to some agreement, but let's go ahead. David?
No.
Okay. Paul?
Length of the project.
Length?
How long is it going to take?
To, after-
Do you have an anticipated opening date?
After we approve.
Yeah.
So, is that, because normally, we don't do a back-and-forth with the audience.
I cannot hear what's going on.
Well, it's the building applicant answering the question.
Right. Just, so do they have a proposed date?
Yeah, the proposed date would be to open the interior of the building this summer. All the facade improvements, we are, we're open, you know, we want to answer your questions and take, take the feedback that we've all heard tonight and implement that. So, the actual hotel will be open for business inside this summer.
Does that take care of you, Paul?
Well, I couldn't hear everything he was saying. I'm having, I'm struggling to, with the audio tonight, and it's not really necessarily the audio. I have an inner ear problem. Anyway, so what was the projection for the exterior?
So, you want to go ahead?
So, for the exterior, we will have to go through a building permit process, and so that will really determine timeline for when we can- And so that will really determine timeline for when we can start that. So our plan is to do a soft opening of the inside of the hotel. And then depending upon when we're, when we get that building permit, we would start right away. It's not something we want to take an extended period of time. As you can imagine, if we have guests at the hotel, it would interrupt their experience. And we want five-star reviews from anyone who stays at the hotel. So we probably will have to stagger that and move as quickly as possible, get a bigger crew to do the exterior to, to not have it interrupt much time for guests.
Anything else, Paul? Okay, Tucson.
I just wanted to give thumbs up to the architects on this project. I think it's going to be a wonderful upgrade to the downtown, especially on that intersection, the main intersection of town. So I'm excited to see that happen. And then additionally, I think we do have enough changes here on these conditions to have it come back to us in plan and some more visuals to address the concerns that were raised tonight. So I would be in favor of coming back to us one more time.
Would the applicants be open to a continuance to the next planning commission meeting, which is one month from now? Or do you feel you could make the changes prior to that?
We would love to make the changes as quickly as possible. As you can imagine, we are, we're private owners. We've invested a lot of money. We purchased the building a year ago. And as soon as we got building permits, we have spent a lot of money on the inside of the hotel. So right now there, no guests can stay. And so financially, we're very motivated to open. If the commission insists on a continuance, we'd ask if you would consider approving the paint colors and then letting us go through the graphic sign application process. Because if we could at least have the building painted so it's no longer baby blue and put a sign up, then that would position us to be able to welcome guests a little bit more warmly than what we currently have for an exterior.
So I think we talked about a conditional approval, right?
Well, we can have, we can condition our approval. And we can, we could condition the approval tonight and approve the project with conditions that we develop tonight based on concerns. Or we could continue it. It sounds like they're going to have to come back next month for a sign review. Can you verify that, Teresa?
So the sign review is something that can potentially be done by staff, depending on what the signs are. So I can, I do have the authority to approve some signs as long as they mean, they meet the sign code requirements. However, if you would prefer to have the signs come back to planning commission, that is something that could happen as well.
Melanie, it seems to me that the signs, it's mostly the height. And if there's too many, I don't know if the per-square footage and all that stuff. But it's like, it's mostly the height of the signs that seem to be the issue. Is that correct?
So the, yeah, the main issue is that the hanging signs that are below 10 feet are too low.
And the, all of, yeah, so the ones under the awnings are, won't work, it sounds like. But, and then the one that goes over the doorway, does that have to be lifted?
So there's one that's in the alley that should not be there because that type of sign should not be in the alley. And then the, the ones that are the hanging signs below the awnings are too low. And then on one of the facades, I think that there are too many signs. So that would be another.
So I think, I don't know that that needs to come back to us. It's not like it's a lighting thing. It's like, it's already pretty clear what they can't have.
Right, no, I didn't realize that they were able to resolve the problems through staff, which is lovely. That's what we had hoped for when we did our latest draft or latest iteration of the sign ordinance, that as much could be handled with staff as preferable. So the question is, can we condition the approvals sufficiently to approve the project this evening? Or do we need to come back next month? And I would say, my thought is that we could write adequate conditions to address our concerns. For instance, we have a noise condition. I checked the, I mean, as far as the dark sky requirements, any upward-facing lights are harmful to the night sky, harmful to migrating birds. And, and I would suggest that the lights need to be exclusively downward-facing. So that would be a condition I would prefer. I would want, although I have, and then we could, we have two alternatives for dealing with the A-frame. And I would like Public Works to weigh in. And so if we allowed, if we wrote a condition such that Public Works would have the final word, or perhaps another alternative for how to manage that and be safe, I would think, oh, there would be some code requirement that would deal with that. That that potentially, we could also come up with a condition of approval to meet that concern. I think that's, addresses what we're trying to do. So commissioners, how do you feel about that approach?
I like that approach.
I'd like to see, I'd like to let them get going and move forward as much as possible, but still address those concerns. So, yeah, make it conditional. I mean, they've already stated that they're not going to be able to get going right away on the outside. But just to let them get the building painted would be, I'm sure, very helpful for them. I think we ought to let them do that.
Are you looking for, are you looking for a motion?
Well, I'm looking for, I don't think we're quite ready for a motion yet. I'm, I'm wanting to get consensus about whether the commission feels that we can write adequate conditions of approval this evening to approve the project. Or whether your feeling is that we would need to have them come back again in a month.
I didn't see any paint samples, color samples in the, unless I missed it. Did you have anything along those lines?
So paint samples were submitted. I didn't bring them because the colors on the examples, the illustrations that they provided, looked to me like they were fairly close to what was submitted. I can bring those in if you need those.
My main concern is, is it says off-white, but we don't know how much off-white. Is it going towards gray? Just as a, you know, glare type of an issue? If it's too bright when the sun's on it? You know, it makes a difference if it's a little bit gray or if it's more on the bright side.
So the, the white color doesn't match a piece of paper white. It's definitely got a little bit more gray to it. But if you looked at the white without holding it up to a piece of paper, you would not really be able to tell too much difference.
You wouldn't be able to tell there's much difference between this piece of paper and the color they've chosen?
Without having the two, well.
Because it looks pretty, on the, on the gray side to me.
Yeah.
In these pictures.
So we did ask, so when we did the last, the Starbucks project, we asked them to tone it down because it was too white. And it's kind of like we're telling you the same thing. But we don't, it's, I don't know which of these colors is the color you think it is.
And can I, can I speak to that? So I actually watched the planning commission meeting in discussion in regards to Starbucks, so had a, had a heads up on that. We initially had a lighter color white. And after watching that meeting, we went back and modified the color. So it's called origami white and it's got a creamy color to it. So it's a pretty drastic difference next to a white, white. So we did, we heard you regarding glare and made a modification at that, at that time. So I think you would be pleased with the white that we selected.
You comfortable with that?
I think so, yeah.
Because you're trying very hard.
Well, well, that, the understanding of the color of the building makes me even more concerned about the uplighting and glare. So I feel very strongly that that does need, those lights need to be downward-facing. So, but we haven't answered the question yet. Do we have consensus amongst commissioners to approve the project tonight with conditions? Or do you want to wait until next month and have them come back with revised proposal and colored chips, et cetera? Commissioner, let me just go in order. David, what are your thoughts?
I think we have consensus.
Consensus to?
To move forward.
To approve it tonight?
With the couple of conditions that we've talked about, yeah.
Okay, Paul?
Move forward with the conditions.
Okay, Tucson?
Yeah, if we can write them out clearly, I think we can move forward.
Yeah, me too.
Belinda, yeah, Vaughn?
Yes.
Vaughn, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Well, then let's get with condition writing. Would somebody like to tackle a noise condition?
Yeah, tough.
A time, just a time, like a downtime or a quiet time set for the noise. You know, like for people, for use of that patio sort of thing.
I have a question for Tucson, as a design guy. Is there, are there materials you'd recommend for them to use outdoors that might dampen the noise?
Well, anything that's sound absorber, absorptive, like on the walls for wood, reflecting, you know, ricocheting noise. There are some ways to, to deal with it. Plants as, as well can break up noise.
There is a lot of noise downtown. I mean, there's traffic, there's stuff happening. So it, you know, if, as long as it's a decent hour, people don't usually go to bed before nine o'clock down there. I would think if they had a cutoff of a nine o'clock in the patio, it'd be, it'd be fine. And especially if there's not a bunch of, you know, and it's the, it's the lights that are the biggest one. They, we, do we trust them to come back with, to do the right lights? Or do we want to see the actual light, a design of the light fixture they're going to use around the building?
Thought that was going to be conditional?
Yeah.
We can condition a full cutoff light. And then it's up to our building inspectors to enforce it.
So what are the conditions of, it's the lighting? That's the one that we are, seem to be the most problematic about. And, and the, you want, Melanie, did you want the Public Works to weigh in on that?
A-frame.
A-frame, yes, definitely. I would definitely want Public Works input. So we would add a condition, an additional condition to have Public Works determine the safest way to accomplish protecting people from the A-frame and allowing snow removal.
I have some draft conditions I've written for your consideration.
There you go.
That'd be lovely, thank you.
Otherwise.
A revised plan for the A-frame will be submitted to the Public Works for approval. A revised lighting plan shall be submitted for approval to the city planner to include sconce lighting exclusively downward-facing and revised string lights shone below the fence line. Lighting in the patio shall be shut off by 9:00 PM and the patio closed between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Commissioners, what do you think?
Are we good with that?
I just want to make one comment on that. So isn't our city noise ordinance basically everything is shh after 10 o'clock? So, I mean, nine is a more reasonable hour for the people that live next door. But I think 10 o'clock is the reasonable expectation because everything else is required to be quiet by then. So just throwing that out there, I'll go with whatever everybody wants to do, though.
Do we know if the next-door residence is actually a residence or is it being operated as a short-term rental?
I believe it's residential.
Because one of those next-door is a short-term rental. I just don't know if it's the one right next door.
Yeah, I haven't, I mean, it doesn't look wholly lived in. But, you know, and I wonder if they're just sitting, wondering, waiting to see if that, if they can rezone it commercial if it isn't already.
So if it's also a short-term rental, then they could have noise complaints and unruliness against them. So it's kind of a, I don't know. I think as long as they follow the noise ordinance, 10 to 7 or 10 to 6 and.
I think your point about consistency. I think consistency is a very good idea. I appreciate that. 10 to 7 sounds consistent.
So.
Guests?
It's 10 to 7.
Any, any other questions, comments regarding the additional conditions of approval?
Did we address the, the planters or whatever is going to be at the bottom of the A-frame to keep people away from the sloped?
Wasn't that part of the?
Public Works.
Public Works weighing in.
He's supposed to redo that.
Is there no code requirement regarding that kind of an overhang?
There would be.
It would be a building code requirement. And the project was referred to the building department.
But, but Joe Peterson hasn't seen it yet?
I believe.
It's, I think it's ADA.
It was, it was.
But the way that it's drawn makes it look like it would meet ADA requirements.
I think we're talking about the A-frame part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the slant will protrude more than three inches off the building. Below 27 inches. So once it does that, it alludes to everything above is a hazard as well.
Interesting. So this is unusual and there's not a code requirement that fits this kind of structure?
I'm pretty sure there is. I don't know the exact code, but it's usually if there's a walking path, there needs to be.
Nothing can believe, 82 inches.
No, it sounds like we need clarity on the A-frame.
So maybe there would be not only Public Works, but a code review?
Which will happen when it goes to planning department.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
And we do have time with regards to that because that's not, they're not going to get to it right away anyway, although I know they want to work on it as quickly as possible, so.
Well, they're going to paint and they're going to.
Right, that's the first.
Have their signs, they'll be able to put signs up. And so that A-frame could be done after the painting, for sure.
Right.
It'd be hard to paint before the A-frames then, wouldn't it?
No.
I mean, not hard, but more difficult.
Paint the wall and then you paint, put the A-frame up. I mean, seems to me.
I'm just saying, if I was painting that thing, I'd run away.
Painting the A-frame.
Paint first, for sure.
So Teresa, what do you think on this one? As far as the, who, who are we going to get to help us with that A-frame issue?
So it can be sent through Public Works and the building department. And we, we would just get the final approval from Public Works. Seems like that would be reasonable.
Okay, I see a bunch of nods on that one.
When it goes to the building department for its permit, it'll get picked up, whatever code violations there is or whatever modifications need to be made to make it.
I'd be happy to chime in on that quickly, too, if you guys would like.
What?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, this is David. I'd be happy to chime in on that a little bit more, just to reiterate that.
It's the architect?
Yeah.
So with the, the two options that we're going to propose to Public Works, the, the two issues that would come up would, would be definitely. two issues that would come up would, would be definitely caught in, in city building code. The planner at the base therefore would not, if it's above a certain height, it's not going to be a tripping hazard at that point. So it's just like any other feature on a sidewalk. So the awning really becomes a moot point at that because the planner would be obstructive of walking into the awning. If the awning goes, the angle goes away and goes full down to the ground like we originally had, the Public Works is okay with that. That again, meets the code for someone like a blind person with a walking stick and it doesn't become an ADA requirement because the path of travel is not obstructed.
Okay, well, it sounds like, like we want to make sure that it'll, I still think we're good if it meets code and it meets Public Works' preference approval. Commissioners? All right, do we, are we there? Do we, do these conditions work for the commission? And if so, maybe it's time for a motion.
So then we need, we can make a motion to approve with the conditions that Teresa has so kindly written up for us?
Yes.
With those conditions, the final product we'll get when those conditions are met. Something like that, is that?
They will be met, I think.
They will be met.
Need to approve the resolution per the findings and conditions of the staff report. And with the additional conditions discussed, one being that the revised plan for the A-frame will be submitted for approval to the building department and Public Works. That the revised lighting plan submitted for approval to the city planner to include sconce lights exclusively downward facing and revised string lights shone below the fence line. And the revised condition that lighting on the patio shall be shut off by 10:00 PM and the patio closed between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
Can I make a motion for approval based on the conditions discussed?
I need that emotion already, so.
Did you?
Yeah.
Just clarifying.
All right, so Belinda, move. It sounds like Paul's a second?
I didn't even say that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it sounded like a question, not a motion.
Well, I was at, the question was for her to fill that, all that stuff in.
But if there's a motion, I'll second it.
There we go. There was a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Belinda, second from Bonn, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No, opposed, motion passes unanimously. The project is approved as per conditions and findings. Thank you, Commissioners. Good luck. Okay, do you need a break? Does everybody need a break before we move on to the, yes, let's, we're going to take a five-minute break. Does that work for everybody?
Sorry, Judge K. [inaudible 00:01:53]. I am a senior deputy labor commissioner, which means that I hold hearings.
Yes, and you have, and you, yeah, this was so messy.
So my questions are always a lot more specific.
We're waiting for David?
We're ready.
We're missing David.
David has recused himself for the remainder of the meeting as he has a short-term rental.
Gotcha. I remember now. Thank you for that. Then, okay, we're back. Item number six, short-term rentals ordinance draft. Teresa?
All right. So I am bringing a draft of a short-term rentals ordinance before you for just initial comments. When I was at the last city council meeting, there was somewhat of a request that we move along on this thing. So we're moving along on this thing. The draft that's before you is a hybrid of the draft that Juliana had worked on when she was here and the draft that I had approved for the city of Point Arena. There are some things that I have removed from the draft that Juliana had added, and there are things that I have added essentially from my draft. If you've had a chance to review it, hopefully you've noted some of the changes there. But in terms of the big picture items, the starting place that I thought made sense was to have a cap on the total number of short-term rentals that would be approved by a resolution. So that's something that could be changeable. So we haven't decided what that number is at this point, just how it would be approved. And then in addition to that, there would be an allowance to, within that cap, approve short-term rentals in the commercial zones as principally permitted use and approve short-term rentals in R2 and R3 zones with a use permit if the cap allows for additional units. So that is how it's proposed at this time.
You're muted, Mel.
I was talking to my husband.
Bob.
So then where would you like us to go with that, Teresa? Do you want us to dive in? Although I actually, and I'm hoping if you'll have, take some time maybe to give us kind of your thoughts on why you put in what you put in and why you took out what you took out. We spent a lot of time on, you know, a year, year and a half ago to get to the draft we had last March. So I'd love to know your experience and your input on how you got to the, some more depth on the, how you got to the draft we have before us tonight.
Sure. So the things that I added, that I put in included some additional safety items as well as, as well as some requirements for the Airbnb or other company that people are going through in terms of reporting to the jurisdiction. When I did the short-term rentals ordinance for the city of Point Arena, we had copied a recent ordinance that was a Southern California ordinance relative to the Airbnb-type reporting requirements. And we actually got a letter from Airbnb, and they had said, okay, well, here's the problem that we are currently having with this other ordinance, and here are some changes that we would recommend that you make to your ordinance that would work better for our reporting. And so we did. We, we made those modifications. And, and so that is part of what is in there. I'm trying to think about some of the things that were taken out. Can you recall some of the things that were taken out?
One of the main things that, that we were going back and forth on was the number of licenses and in which zones. So I don't see that verbiage in here. Is that going to come back to us, or is that going to be a city council decision now?
So this is just me asking for your feedback on this draft. If you want additional verbiage put back in, if you want things taken out, then that is the, what I'm looking for.
The staff report. Okay.
Okay. Well, I can answer your question a little bit, Teresa, around something that you took out had to do with how do we do with compliance about, what do we do about compliance for existing non-compliant short-term rentals? We had talked about a grandfathering idea, an amnesty period, and I know you've, you've taken all that out. And I just wondered what your thoughts were about that.
Okay.
I have more. Start with that.
My thought on the amnesty period was by the time this short-term rentals ordinance gets written, we should be well past that in terms of our compliance process is what the intent is, is that we're working with Granicus. They are identifying the short-term rentals that are out of compliance, and they are, you know, in the process, hopefully, of working with the city or shortly will be in the process of working with the city to contact those short-term rental managers. And, you know, at this point, we have a moratorium. So they're, as far as getting in compliance, I don't, I mean, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of past that at this point, would be my impression. You know, if somebody has been illegally running a short-term rental, or, you know, while we've been going through all these processes, you know, while we've gotten to the point of moratorium, you know, why would we come back after we approve it and say, oh, and if you've been doing it illegally, you're good to go? That, I think, was kind of my...
That, that seems critically reasonable. When is the, that reminds me, when is the moratorium, when does it expire?
At this point, the moratorium expires in February, February 15, 2023. It's hoped that the moratorium will end, or that we would essentially end it when the ordinance goes into effect.
Oh, great. Okay. And then, not specifically to short-term rentals in the R1, does that mean that the prohibition continues?
That was the intent.
Okay. And it sounds like as far as the cap goes, you're, it sounds like whoever, however we implement a cap, it sounds like the resolution is a way to make it more adaptable to changing conditions. But the planning commission can certainly be involved in proposing what that cap should be.
I'm having a hard time hearing you over the train. I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
Are you ready? Should I wait? I can't tell the trains coming by.
Maybe just one more.
Squeaky.
Okay, I think that we're a little better now.
We'll find out, huh?
Oh, I can hear you.
Okay. Try again, Melanie.
All right. Regarding the cap, it sounds to me like the idea is to have the council set the cap so that it could be changed more easily.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Another engine. Okay.
Okay, we'll try one more time. So if the council changes the cap, can change the cap more easily than we can in the ordinance, but you do expect that we would provide input on what that cap should be, yes?
That is a reasonable assumption, yes.
Okay. And regarding the use permit, would that be if an R, in the R2 and the R3, if the cap would allow more short-term rentals than we would already have in the commercial zones, would that, would those, would those short-term rentals need to go through the actual conditional use permit process?
Yes, that would be the intent, is that for the R2 and R3 zones, they would go through the conditional use permit process and come before you.
So that would take care of the neighbor notification piece?
Yes.
Okay. And you also remove the cap, you remove the cap on numbers of nights rented. Can you, can you go into that, please?
Yeah. So if there's a cap on the number of nights rented, essentially what you're doing is you're, to me, it seems like you're encouraging people to illegally rent out their unit and not pay their TOT on it. Because if, if somebody has a short-term rental and they, that is how they're making their money, you know, and you only, and you say that they can only rent it for a specific number of nights, it devalues that unit. And I don't, I don't really understand what would be accomplished relative to that. I mean, if the unit is sitting empty, it has the potential to be a nuisance because it's something that, you know, kids or whoever might come and notice that it's empty and try to break into it, might, you know, destroy things or deface things. It might be a place where, you know, crime could happen. I know that this isn't that kind of community where those are huge concerns. But in terms of an unused residential building, there, there's a preference that the use is there as opposed to a building sitting empty. And I don't know whether the intent was to try to keep it as a long-term rental in the meantime because I don't think that that's going to be feasible.
I can address, thanks. I can address the intent on that. So what we were thinking, and commissioners, you can tell me if I'm off base, but the idea was, the idea of kind of the, the short-term rental couch surfing, or maybe it's somebody's second home, but they want to rent it out once in a while. And this is not in the commercial zone. This is only in residential. The idea of the cap on nights was, it doesn't take a residential building and turn it into a full-time commercial use. Instead, it would accommodate, you know, again, second homeowners who are renting out their home part of the time in so, but not, like I say, we didn't anticipate an empty building. Or the kind of deal where, you know, like the early Airbnb where somebody was really, you know, renting out a bedroom in their house, short-term, to allow for that. But again, it's a residential area, so it's not intended to be a full-time commercial use. Does that make sense? Does that sound right, fellow commissioners?
Goes to me.
So are you suggesting that you would like that part put back in?
We've talked about it quite a bit.
And also, maybe caps on our R2 and R3 zones, you know, a limitation on the number of licenses, even though it's going through a conditional use process. I think we need to cap it.
Where'd we lose the cap? Was that...
So would that be in addition to the overall cap?
Oh, yeah, the overall cap between commercial and residential.
Yeah. So the intent was that there would be an overall cap on all short-term rentals, and that's commercial and rent, and residential.
Oh, I see. So, so it wouldn't be like an unlimited commercial zone?
That was the argument we heard.
We had talked about that.
Commercial people said, hey, listen, we bought this for a commercial purpose, and that's to rent it. And we capped the R2 and R3 because we didn't want much in those zones.
Was it 1.5% the number, Belinda?
Huh?
Was 1.5% the number?
I don't remember that.
Hey, Paul, I can't hear you. Can you put your mouth near the mic, please?
I asked her if 1.5% was the number we discussed. It's been so long. Is it 1.25 or 1.5%?
It's in the draft ordinance that we had for our March meeting. So I'm sure Teresa can access that.
I think the aggregate number last time I heard was 51.
Right. But what percentage did that 51 represent?
I don't know. But I, the reason why I was a little, I won't say distressed over is because I've seen, having lived in a community that had a lot of short-term rentals in St. Helena, California, I mean, that's a town of 5,000 people. It's, you know, 2,000 more than we've got. And they limit theirs at 20, 28?
So we already have more than 51 on the books.
What's that?
We already have more than 51 on the books.
Yeah. And here's the worst part about it, is that whenever you've got that 51, for example, and you set that number that high, and you already know there's abuse, what's the, has there been a study on what the percentage of abuse is? So maybe we're at 100, and we really only want to have 51? That's, that's one of the concerns I have.
Oh, I think the number we would have with our target from, that we came up with last year was maybe closer to 30 total. Doesn't that sound about right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a good number.
And then we would, we had it based on, well, I can't remember how she calculated it, maybe total housing units, something like that.
So it sounds like what we're saying is we, we don't want the cap to be in the commercial so much as we want the cap to be in the residential.
Exactly.
They can't, we can't have 50 available or, and have it all be in residential.
Right.
Because, I mean, those commercial people, they got upset. So we know what that's like.
Well, define "commercial."
C1, the C1 zones.
In the commercial zone.
C2, yeah.
Okay.
Anything in those zones kind of have a somewhat of a right. I would, I was looking at the noise, and it's eight to seven, and we just talked about the 10 to seven. And so, but that's the commercial, once and, that's once again, the downtown zone.
Yeah.
So it's, and eight is so early. I mean, somebody's going to have a barbecue outside in the summer. Eight o'clock is not going to cut it. I mean...
Again, I've been subject to, I mean, I lived in St. Helena, we had a, there was a vineyard in the backyard. People from New York, whatever, were two doors down, and they were walking, they, you know, it's, it's 10 o'clock to them. And they're making noise, walking down, first thing on a Saturday or Sunday morning. They're staying, you know, you get these corporate people that are paying these large sums for these things. And there's parties at night. You have to call the cops because they're after, you know, they're after the, the, you know, the 10 o'clock curfew. And the cops ended up having to show up all the time. I mean, I'm just thinking, having lived through this as a, as a neighbor, you know, it's, and those people are not sensitive because they don't live here. They don't, they don't have, they don't have a dog in a fight, you know? So they're just out having a good time. They don't care about us.
But 8 o'clock is, is...
I, I don't disagree with that. 8 o'clock's not good.
I would go with nine and be content, except in the commercial zones, when you're going to have to do the 10 to make it consistent, like we talked about already, right? I mean...
And I know that there were some, some sturdy fines. There was, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars for people who broke that ordinance, who, who went ahead and did their own thing, even though they didn't have one of those permits. And those permits, I know the other question we had too was, in looking at the thing, was the transferability, which I have questions about too, but anyway.
Can't transfer it. Doesn't go with the house.
Well, they were talking about that at the council meeting, though.
Yeah. So the, the transferability is just an interim measure during the moratorium to make it so that there isn't a financial loss during a sale of an existing short-term rental during the moratorium.
Yeah, but the grandfathering of that was the other issue that came along with that.
But it's not, they don't have any grandfathered rights any different than any other short-term rental. So essentially, all of the existing short-term rentals are grandfathered. Anything that has an approved use is grandfathered and has that right to have that use renewed on an annual basis. So we're not taking anyone's short-term rentals away from them.
Is this all zones?
What's that?
R zones and C zones?
All of the approved short-term rentals. So, I mean, we're not talking about ones that are operating illegally. We're talking about ones that are operating above board that have short-term, you know, have business licenses and are paying their TOTS. It's kind of a, it's one of, it's, it's just like, it's a basic planning right. It's like, if you have a house, you paid so much money for it, you have an expectation that you're going to be able to make money off of the use that you bought it for. We don't really have the ability to take that away from you. And so, yeah, absolutely, there's a grandfathering in of the people who have already obtained that right.
What about a lottery? Has anybody talked about that at all?
No, we didn't. That's interesting because we were not, when we were discussing the ordinance last year and before, we hadn't intended to necessarily grandfather the existing short-term rentals. There's, there are so many non-compliant ones that, and, and part of that, I mean, one of the goal, frankly, is that we don't want to encourage a lot of short-term rentals in the residential zones. And we recognize that there is a need in a market for those, and, and we felt like accommodating that need in the commercial zone was, was the best fit. So if there are short-term rentals in the residential zones now, they would have to come in. You're saying that they would not have to come in and apply for a conditional use permit? Is that what you're saying, Teresa?
I'm saying that any new ones would need to apply for a conditional use permit. So the, the existing ones that are in compliance would not need to do anything other than continue to get their business license renewed annually and continue to pay their TOTS, which is what they have been doing.
And if we were to, and if we were to require that the residential districts, the residential zones had caps on the numbers of nights that people were allowed to stay in those, are you saying that we can't apply that to the existing short-term rentals in residential zones?
I don't believe that we could. I don't think that we can go back. And it really, it depends, you know, it's really a matter for the city attorney to decide whether or not that that kind of restriction after the fact would be allowable based on the way that the business license have, have been issued and the language in the business license. So if the business license says you don't have a use, you don't have any right to assume that you can renew this, you know, if it straight up says that, then, then, you know, then restrictions can be applied, I suppose. I don't know how appropriate it would be to do that to people. And it's definitely not something that I've seen happen in other jurisdictions when they've changed rules.
That's so interesting. Commissioners, I, this is, my memory of our conversation last year was that we would expect that the process of having to apply for a conditional use permit potentially in a residential zone, that they would have to do that and that they could know, that short-term rentals in residential zones would have new regulations that they would need to comply with. Is that not what other people were thinking?
Well, I think that even if that was what we were thinking, I think we might want to rethink it a little bit. Because I do think that these people that have been in compliance and do, and especially, and we're talking mostly the R, R zones, in compliance, and they've signed up, and this is, they've set themselves up with a belief that they can survive because of being able to rent that house or room out. But anybody new, you could certainly put a different stipulation on. I would think that might work.
I would, I would also assume that, that the existing ones have been in compliance, and they haven't had complaints from neighbors and that sort of thing. So we kind of know they're, they're good? Is that...
Yeah. And so, I mean, there are parts of the code that would definitely apply to the grandfathered-in units. For example, you know, there's parts of the code that speak to, you know, if you do go out of compliance, then you lose your license, sort of thing. Yeah. And that would definitely apply to everyone.
Yeah. And then it would, it could trigger, you can only rent for 150 days a year or whatever, if we want to do that. I think it gets really complicated. But I'm, that's just me.
And then the other thing is, is that the limitation on the number of days per year, like you're talking about for a residential zone, that is something that could be a standard condition of the use permit if it makes sense for that specific location, as opposed to having that be something that's written outright in the code. I have a tendency to not like things that are written outright in the code like that because they may not necessarily apply to every situation. And it makes it very difficult to adapt that if there was a situation where it made perfect sense for someone in an R3 zone or an R2 zone to be renting it full-time. zone to be renting it full-time.
Do you have an example for, like, for both instances?
Yeah, so for example, you know, if there was a residential, a residence in the R3 zone that was close to a commercial use, that didn't really have any neighbor issues, that it just made sense that there not be a limitation on having that be a commercial use in that situation. You know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine all of the different scenarios that can come up. But it, to me, it just kind of makes sense that if you're going to apply a restriction like that, that has the potential to significantly reduce the value of a property, that it not be applied across the board, that it be applied on a case-by-case basis.
Also, part of our thinking for going down this path was our concern about housing, right? So the goal is to, to eliminate some of these short-term rentals and open them up for long-term occupancy. And so with that goal in mind, you know, how do we get there and do it fairly? I mean, it's, it's important clearly to be fair.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's the goal.
I think the fact that, that the short-term rentals in the R zones would have to go through a use permit process is kind of...
A deterrent.
A big deterrent. And the other, here's the other part that I'm thinking about that is kind of like a big picture idea. So we have this other thing going on, which is for many years, businesses along the main streets in the commercial zones have just been getting signed permits approved for commercial uses in residences. They haven't actually gone through the building permit process to convert to commercial structures. We have many, many, many of these buildings that are operating commercially in residences right now, in commercial zones, that have not converted to commercial structures as far as the building code is concerned and as far as ADA is concerned. We have a challenge ahead of us because we need to be able to reach out to these property owners, to these business owners, and let them know that, you know, technically, they need to get a building permit to convert to commercial use. And we have to reach out to a lot of people. And what I foresee is that we've got, we've got a lot of commercial uses happening in residences in commercial zones. And given that, and given how many residences there are in commercial zones, you know, there's kind of a, there's kind of a possible shift that could be happening in the future in that as businesses look at that conversion possibility, they might be slowly moving towards actual commercial buildings that are approved as commercial buildings. And that will help us consolidate commercial uses in commercial buildings in the commercial district, which is gonna bring things back in a little bit. But I think that the other big picture to that is for both short-term rentals and for these commercial uses, we have a lot of work. We have a lot of work in terms of looking to the future to make sure that these uses are safe, that they're ADA accessible. I mean, for both of these things, because for short-term rentals, you need, you need for that to serve a visitor-serving use too. So it needs to pass inspections as well. So do you kind of see where I'm going with that? It just kind of feels like as there, as it is, we, there's a lot of work and a lot of shifting.
Well, I could see on the, just for the businesses that are operating in non-commercial prop, I could see giving them like a 90-day notice to get in compliance. The bigger problem comes with the, the, the short-term rentals. I still have a problem with grandfathering people in on these and, and, you know, I'm thinking along like the, like a liquor license, like you're, you're really picking winners and losers and somebody's going to have to, you know, if there's a short shortage of liquor licenses that drives the prices up. And I'm thinking of a house I looked at when I first wanted to move to town over on Pony Trail. And that house is going for over half a million bucks, but it wasn't a half a million dollar house, only because they had the, the permit.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, I struggle with all of this.
So here's, here's a thought. What if the code actually has the inspection requirement be on an annual basis with the renewal of the business license?
I'm digging it. That's good.
That way, there needs to, there's a point every year at which every one of these short-term rentals needs to meet safety requirements.
I mean, I get it. If you've bought a property that, that had the permit and with the understanding that you're gonna have that permit, I, I, I mean, what I'm saying is I can see both sides of this. And that's why I use the word struggle, because I can see both sides.
So do we have a cap? What's the cap on the number of rental, short-term?
There's no language in this draft that says what the number is. If you would like to set one, we can add that.
I think we need to.
Yeah, because that would help, because then we wouldn't feel like it was a free-for-all kind of. And, and once again, are we doing it commercial and R1? We had it, we had this all kind of set out somewhere. I thought we worked on this.
Why would we do that for commercial when they already have to go through the use permit process?
So then, I think it would be good to set a cap on the number of short-term rentals in the residential districts.
I'm perfectly good with that.
Okay.
So then, my question is, if we don't, I'm gonna, what you were talking about, Teresa, do you think that there's gonna be an incentive when these residential structures that have been converted to commercial use without commercial permit, commercial building permit? Were you also implying that there was gonna be an incentive to, instead of doing the commercial upgrade, looking at a different revenue source, which could be a short-term rental?
I don't know. And that's part of the question is, 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 it's hard to know what's going to happen as we dig deep into this thing. I know, are we, are we creating an issue for ourselves? You know, are we actually gonna be creating more housing in the commercial zone because that's what it's going to be approvable for? I don't know. I don't know what, what the shift is going to be, but it could potentially be that approving it for a short-term rental might make sense depending on what the code requirements are. And I don't know, you know, how ADA fits in with short-term rentals relative to other commercial uses. That'd be a question for the building inspector, but that might be the defining difference.
Well, in, in the county, they don't have, you know, regulations for ADA for short-term rentals. I know that. It might be the same here. I mean, it's a statewide, no, I'm thinking about ADUs, but the short-term, yeah, the county doesn't have a stipulation on that. The one thing that I'd be concerned about in the commercial zone is existing apartments, you know, and upper-floor apartments or wherever apartments are in the commercial zone. I wouldn't want to see those get converted to short-term rentals. So if there's some way to deal with that.
That's a really good, I agree with him. Because we want the mixed use. We've been trying to implement it, mixed use planning. So we do have people living in the commercial area, and so we want to have residential, genuine residential use in the commercial area.
Yeah.
It would be helpful. You know, it would, it might be helpful if we knew, how many of the compliant short-term rentals do we have that are in the commercial districts? And maybe this is harder, how many residences, how many residences do we have in the commercial district?
You know, I was, I was rethinking this thing about people in residences, say along Mount Shasta Boulevard, that are running businesses out of there. And I'm trying to think through what would happen if, like I said, if we gave them a 90-day notice. What would they do? They'd probably have to either rent their places out, which we know we need rental places, or we'd shut our businesses, which is not gonna look pretty driving down Mount Shasta Boulevard. And so I could see where it's double, it's swords, certainly.
Yeah.
But the raised revenue though, from the permits, you know, from the, from the commercial, the city would benefit from.
I think we benefit most when we have vibrant businesses in our community, whatever, you know, what that looks like. That's how we benefit. I don't know that, and I, and as far as the ADA requirements for a short-term rental, and, you know, and again, the idea that we did want to support the, you know, the, I think the original idea of Airbnb, which was, you know, rent out your couch for somebody who's showing up in town, you know, that, that kind of deal. I don't think we want to shut the door on that. And that certainly wouldn't comply with ADA requirements if somebody were doing that. So I'm, I don't know how we get there.
Train. There's a train. Could we potentially give preference to a short-term rental if they have ADA access? I mean, that they might, maybe they would, you know, get ahead of the line or something. I don't know. Maybe you have so many short-term rentals that have accessibility and we, we want to encourage that, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Oh, I'm gonna throw this in because I don't want to forget it. And it's getting late and we may, this doesn't seem like we're gonna wrap this up tonight. But Paul triggered this with a question he asked me. Does the city have a evacuation, fire evacuation or emergency evacuation plan? Because every single one of our hotels and all of these rental units of strangers don't know where the heck to go.
Yeah, so they're actually changing to a new system for a fire evacuation. I think the old system was called Code Red, maybe? And then the new system is based on zones. And I think the, the idea is that if you're in a certain zone, then you get the call and you're told what the next steps are.
Well, shouldn't it be a requirement of anybody that rents, letting to anybody to have that notification for, for the strangers that don't know where they are?
That would fall under the fire marshal.
Yeah, I think that that's, that's something that could be done. And the way that that could be added to the language is that everyone, the way that the code's written now, every one of the short-term rentals has to have somebody local that is a management person that can show up and take care of issues. And we could add something in the code that says, in case of emergency, evacuation, whatever, that that person is required to be there within a certain, you know, within a certain amount of time, within an hour or whatever, and notify.
Yeah, but it'd also be nice to show a map of whatever, or here's a phone number you can hook up to, to be part of our emergency code, whatever.
Yeah.
Because I'm not gonna trust somebody to be there for me. I want to know what I can do to protect myself.
Yeah.
But that's, so that's, that's all I have to say about that for the moment.
Okay, that can be incorporated.
So can we, can you, Teresa, can you go back and look at what we talked about for grandfathering from our, the latest iteration of the ordinance?
Sure. Just to, just to, like, talk about that in general terms, what we would need to look at is what the language in the business license is. Now, there are actually some short-term rentals that have use permits. So they have short-term rentals a different way. And the reason for that is, is because years ago, use permits were issued for short-term rentals. And something happened and that stopped happening. And, and then they just started issuing business licenses for them. So the ones that actually have business license, have a use permit, they're gonna be treated differently than one, the many of them that, you know, may have business licenses, if there's language in that business license that says you don't have any right to continue. I don't know. But, you know, if that were the case, then it would be possible to potentially not grandfather people in, to say, you know, when your business license expires, you're done if you're in these certain zones. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to personally do that to people. And I think that the better way to go about that instead is to have something in the code that says annually, as you renew your business license, these are the things that you will need to do. And it includes having an inspection and meeting the inspection for fire code requirements and for building code requirements. And then the people who are willing to have that inspection and make sure that their building meets fire code and building code requirements, you know, they're the ones that get their license renewed. So I, my preference would be that we ask people to jump through reasonable hoops at the time of renewal rather than just taking the right away from them.
And that would be consistent with what the county does, that they do a yearly inspection? Yeah.
Yeah.
Melanie, I have to excuse myself. I'm sorry.
You have to leave? We still have a quorum. You're lea, is that, you are leaving? Darn.
Yeah, I'll try to log on when I get home. My ear is killing me. I can't.
I'm sorry. Darn. Take care of yourself.
I apologized to you guys.
Take care, Paul.
All right, yes. You know that Commissioner Beck had to leave at 8:55. Well, since this is, this is just the first revision of the latest draft. And maybe, I think, I, I'm hearing your points, Teresa, and I appreciate them. And, oh, one more quick question. You said you changed the requirement for how many people occupy a certain space. We had a requirement in there and you changed that. Can you give me a quick update?
Yeah, yeah. So I think that the occupancy should be based on the size of the structure and the number of bedrooms that are available, period. And that that should be shown as part of the application. So, you know, having a limitation on the number of occupants when we don't even know what the structure holds or what it, you know, what, what the occupancy should be. what the structure holds or what it, you know, what, what the occupancy should be doesn't really make sense to me.
Oh, I thought it was tied to bedrooms, but, okay. So if it's part of the permit, that sounds like it's covered. It's just we're covering it in a different way.
I'm sorry?
Oh, since, it sounds to me like the goal of reasonable occupancy for a space is covered as long as permit application identifies number of bedrooms.
Yes.
And pull-out couch or whatever.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you feel like we have, do you feel like, Teresa, you have enough feedback from us to maybe work up a new draft? And then commissioners, do you feel like there's anything else we need to discuss for Teresa for tonight?
Well, the only thing was the cap that we don't really have, you know, for the residential zones, that we had a cap, which I don't remember the numbers at all. But I think that's relatively important.
I like that number 30, that sounds for residential, sounds about the size of our town.
It's, it has to do, we tied it with the number with housing. So if the town grows, hasn't yet particularly, but if it does, that the number was tied. So that's why we used a percentage with the last, and I, and that's easy to look up. It'll be in the, the earlier draft.
As well as...
Incorporate a percentage slash number as the cap to start with, is what I'm hearing?
Not to exceed, maybe, not to exceed so many permits. What do you think?
The percentage-wise, yeah.
Because if the town grows, then that's going to change the, that's going to change it. So there should be a cap, you know, not to exceed X amount of short-term rentals for residential.
Right. Well, or not to, and so not use the percentage. So if, I think the idea was that the percentage allowed for the community to grow.
Yeah.
Or contract, potentially. Hopefully not.
And if it just grows in R1, it's not going to make any difference anyway, because it's only, there's not a lot of R2 and R3 happening. I mean...
I think the number was tied to housing units potentially in the entire city. As, I think it was a number that probably came from our housing element.
I remember seeing numbers of operating short-term rentals in each zone in previous drafts. If, if we could see that again, that would, that might help.
So...
That would be good. You wouldn't want a whole bunch of them, all 30 of them, for example, in the same zone.
Relative to that, you also talked about encouraging ADA. Now, if we had a percentage of units that we wanted to see be ADA compliant, my guess is that the next several units that get approved are all going to have to be ADA compliant in order to meet that percentage.
I just threw that out there. I don't know whether it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea. And I think it's, it's definitely something to work towards and something that is reasonable.
And it makes the community look good, that we respect. It's since I've had a broken leg, I tell you.
Yeah.
It made a huge difference in my, my ADA awareness.
You should accuse yourself from this.
I mean, I can't even imagine being, being in a wheelchair and trying to find an Airbnb.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, there's a need for it. There is.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's going to be toilets, too. It's not just a ramp.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. Okay, good. I'm glad you thought that was a good idea.
And can you find out how many existing short-term rentals we have in the commercial district and the other districts? Can you pull those numbers up for us, Teresa?
So you want to know how many, how many Airbnbs there are, or how many short-term rentals we currently have in each district?
That'd be lovely. I was thinking just commercial, but if it's, if you can pull that out while you're at it.
Okay.
Please. I know that we shouldn't have any in R1. We did have one in R1 that was grandfathered in, but then it closed.
Okay.
But we have that company.
All right, and I, I might be able to, to actually put that on a map for you because I think that's something that Granicus does, so that might be a pretty painless thing to do.
That'd be lovely. Okay, anything else? It's getting late. I don't, I want to make sure we can have, we can talk about our last item hopefully pretty quickly.
Or we can move it until next meeting.
We were talking about stopping the meeting.
That works for me. I think it's, I, because I'd like to include everybody. So unless there's, so, so we table item seven until our next regularly scheduled meeting? Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. That leaves, so we're done. Item six, Teresa has what she needs. We've moved item seven to our next meeting. If we have a quick commission and staff comments, I had some, but I'm going to save them for our next meeting. Well, maybe not. Actually, oh, I'll repeat myself. Commission comments, I just wanted to say there's the training, and if anybody in this group wants to access the training, the city will reimburse travel expenses, FYI. And I'll repeat that next time. Any other commission and staff comments? No. Teresa?
I got nothing.
Okey-dokey. Future agenda items? Teresa?
Sorry?
Item nine, future agenda items?
We have another architectural review potentially coming down the line soon. It's for the cannabis facility on Spring Hill Road.
Is there going to be a design review for the welding place up there next to outbound solar, outbound solar on Spring Hill?
I have not seen a building permit application come in for that yet, but I presume that it will need to go through design review when that comes in.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Item 10, I'm going to adjourn our April 19 meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Tuesday, May 17, 2022. Everyone, nice to see all of you and nice to meet everyone.